Good evening, everybody. Today's Tuesday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, the time is six P M. We're here for the Tuesday work session, the fifth Tuesday work session of the Capitol City Council. We do have four in person, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Uh, we're can, we're uh, we're not in the first of our conference, so we're here in Life Safety Park. Um, we did not have anybody signed up to speak for citizens' appearance, so we're gonna move directly into work session. And this is gonna be a very open conversation about Old Town. You know, we've been, we've been taking this around for years, um, about thirty, I guess. And uh, we made some steps and we've taken some back steps and some side steps, and you need to know where to go in the future. Um, just as a reminder, you know, we don't make decisions for the short term. We're here to make decisions for the, for the future, for the generations after us. So keep that in mind when we're talking about Old Town, whatever that decision may be. I would ask you to be, to be big and be bold. You know, if something is ridiculous, let someone else judge. If you've got an idea, put it out there. We're gonna have a, a very open discussion tonight. If, you know, whatever, whichever extreme you may land on, be big and be bold with it. Just as a little reminder, we've got, we've been working on this for the current embodiment for about three or four years. Um, we had the retail coach come in and, and do a very, very thorough study. Uh, that was probably one of the, there was two things in my mind that, that stuck out. The retail coach's findings were, were absolutely, um, unexpected for me. Uh, I really valued the data that we got out of that study. And the other one that was very, very informative was the Old Town community conversation. And that was just as informative, uh, a little bit different in terms of scope and, and what people were talking about, but it certainly gave us an idea about what citizens are asking for. Then don't forget, we also did the Old Town surveys. And again, those are, are very telling in what they asked for. Um, and then lastly, just a lot in September, yeah, that was last month, we did tours in neighboring communities, uh, North Richland Hills, um, Collieville and South Lake. And uh, that was, that was also very eye opening for me. Um, we saw a lot of similarities between what each one of our sister cities has done and what we have done. And there was very notable differences as well. So I think all of these have set us up to the point that, you know, we have, we have a lot of information at our disposal. We've studied a lot of things, we've gone to a lot of depth to understand. And, you know, our staff is needing some direction on where to go forward for the future. And I'm not, this isn't gonna be, I have no expectation that this will be an executable item in twenty twenty five. I, I mean, we're talking fifteen to twenty years out. This is not something that we're gonna act, that we're gonna finish next year or even by twenty thirty, at least I don't think we will. I think this is gonna be a very long-term plan that will probably go out past our twenty forty plan. So kind of keep that in mind when we start talking. We, we, we don't have a fixed timeframe to, to get this, whatever this thing is done. Um, like they have a very open discussion today. Uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna be led by Tracy and Kent. They're gonna conduct the discussions. They're gonna go over a lot of the things I've just talked about a little bit. Um, and then they're, they're gonna be doing some, some stuff to get some ideas out of us. Stuff, that's very technical. If anybody needs me to find it, I'll, I'll work it out on that. Yeah, there we go. So, um, but anybody have any questions so far? You'll, you know, please feel free to ask questions as we go along. Uh, this is not supposed to be a, a one-person diatribe, so Tracy?
All right. Well, Mayor, thank you for that intro. Um, so my part of the evening is, um, I will describe it as our lightning round. Uh, because Kent's gonna be talking about the meat of, um, what we're here to speak about. Um, so I had sent you guys a couple, um, questions to kind of start your mind thinking. Um, and what, um, what I'd like to do is go around the room and I'm gonna ask these questions, each one of these questions, and give you all an opportunity to verbalize how you would respond to each one of those. Um, and really the purpose of these three questions is to, um, a couple, a couple things. So first is to help, uh, your fellow council members, uh, have more clarity about where your responses are coming from. The second piece is, um, around there is, there's no right or wrong answers. Um, so whatever your answer is, is whatever your answer is. Um, and then it'll help guide us in terms of what outcome do we want to see at the end of this evening, right? Um, so with that, um, I will, I'm gonna ask our very first question. So, um, the, the first question is, um, I do or do not want to see something different for Old Town? And when I say different, that can mean anything from, um, a different, uh, mix of types of businesses, different mix of, uh, residential retail, the different types of retail. It could be literally anything. It could be, I, I want exactly what is there today. Um, so the question is, I do or do not want to see something different for Old Town? We'll start on this side.
I do.
You do, all right?
Yes.
Okay, you do. Yes, you do want to see something different for Old Town, okay? Perfect.
That's a lawyer can answer the two words.
Like, like.
Seems so definitive.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and I asked that question, cause if, if I hear, I do not want to see anything different for Old Town, you all have just given yourselves three hours back. Or two hours, whatever, whatever the time may be, right? And so this is again, to help you guys at least set your mind around what, what we're, what you are here to talk about. Because this, tonight is about you, your vision for this area. What role do you want it to play?
I'll say I do not, yeah.
Mayor?
I do.
I passed the question.
Is that it? Yes.
Equal negative participation.
I just don't want to answer the question. That's all, right? I mean, Kevin?
Yes, I do want something more.
Okay.
And, and different.
Okay, perfect. And we don't even, even qualify right now in terms of defining what that would be for y'all, right? Okay, so, all right, so that's the first question, right? So now we kind of know at least many of you are interested in having a discussion about something different. So the next thing is, the next question I'm gonna ask you is around, when I say the word Old Town, those two words, you define the geographic limits of that area as. So if you walked in and you've seen the boards, there's a number, again, there's a number of different iterations for what Old Town has been, what Old Town is, and maybe what Old Town will be. And so, um, again, there are no right or wrong answers. Um, but this will help. So when y'all are having and providing your feedback toward the, the questions that Kent is gonna walk you through, the answer to this question will give your fellow council members insight to how your responses make sense, if they understand what it is that you conceptualize as Old Town, okay?
Hartage to Senior Center, Art Center to Robertson.
Okay.
When I think of Old Town, I think of, um, an area of Capel that was here a while ago, if that makes sense, right? I have like the older part of the city. And I honestly don't know, I know it encompasses what you mentioned, but I don't know if there might be more that goes along with it.
Okay.
So where we're at, and it could be a little bit more.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Care?
That's all to the rail. And then the Green Heights. To, I guess, to Freeport.
Okay.
Like, at least, at least the Hartage.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor?
So I originally thought that was gonna give a circle, but I think it's more accurate to say, um, to the east side of, of Great Lakes Springs Park, so including the park. Um, over to Freeport, down south to southwestern, or maybe the railway a bit later, later, to terminate it. And over to, uh, and then up north, um, to Riddley.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I think about, uh, Park Road, uh, all the way down to Hartage.
Okay.
Uh, and then going down, uh, to southwestern. And then, uh, coming back, uh, to Capitol Road. Uh, and kind, you know, it's kind of a knot right there, basically. And then I also think about the piece that goes down Capitol Road. That's, that's a part, it's almost like a little, kind of just goes down that corridor, if you will. So that big block plus that, that kind of slip, sliver there.
Okay.
There goes the questions.
Right, thank you. Supreme, come on.
So I, I know better now, but, but for the longest time, I've always thought that Old Town was the area between George's Coffee and, uh, the Art Center.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I thought of Old Town.
Okay, great.
Yeah, for me, senior center to the Hartage on this side, Art Center to Robertson.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Kent?
Uh, yeah, I would say from Freeport over to the Senior Center on Park. Um, going, uh, north up, up Capitol Road up to, um, East. And then, um, just south of the, uh, of the Erickson.
Okay, okay, great. Last question I'm gonna ask you guys. Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, so the last question, um, I'd like to ask is, well, it's a statement. So all these are statements, not really questions. Um, so this will be a successful fifth Tuesday meeting if we have accomplished. So you heard the mayor say that we are not walking away today with a fully fleshed out plan. We're not walking away today, but what will, in your mind, this will be a successful meeting if?
We can come up with at least some ideas, Lord, in your pursuit.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that plus if we can come up with a meeting of the minds of what does more or different look like? So that we know, like, we can define that and we'll start.
Yeah, great. Mr. Care?
Me, it would probably be regardless of what ideas come up tonight, or in the future, or anything else, or got implemented, what is the end game and what is the benefit to the city of Capel for whatever was put into place, uh, and, you know, whatever cost was put into place. What is, what is that ending? What are we trying to accomplish? To add to the city of Capel?
Mayor?
Provided enough information to the city staff, so they can come back to us at a future, with, with options and other ideas.
So, what is the philosophy of Old Town? I think that's the big thing is that we've been, feel like we don't have any clear direction. We have like what was presented in the past, but I think about philosophy and three words that came up was scope, scale, and mixture. Those are the thirty things that I would love to try to get out of this conversation. Scope, scale, and mixture.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tracy, I think my answer is a mix of what, um, Brianna and Jim talked about. Um, so I would really like to hear what my peers think, uh, in the art of possible. Uh, so, so we can maybe identify two or three things that can be done. And also for, for me, uh, so it would be to, uh, have a plan where we actively engage the residents, uh, to contribute to what they want to see.
Sure, great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor. I want to see all of this in the town.
Okay. To him.
I would like to see us come to some sort of agreement on a concept that would propel us in the right direction to, I hate to use the word revitalize, energize, um, the Old Town area.
Okay. So I think I've heard, um, some of those outcomes, I think we're gonna walk away and feel really good about tonight. Um, and some of those op, outcomes, I think tonight is the first step in that direction. So I think we're gonna feel good either way. Um, so at this point, um, I will, now that everybody's got their minds right and we are ready, uh, to engage, I'm gonna turn it over to Kent, who's gonna walk y'all through, um, a, a version of the, the mayor's presentation around what our vision is gonna be.
Thanks, Tracy. Get your phones out, at least. Pop right out if they look like this, right?
Yes.
What, I'm saying, Eaton has my tongue.
Oh, that's a cool.
Put it out.
We've, we've tested it multiple times and it, it works, so. I'm standing there, so. So this is a, uh, it's kind of a modern version of Post-Its on the screen, right? Different questions. Um, so what, what I'm gonna do in this portion of the evening is walk through a series of questions. Um, and you'll see them on your phone as well as on the screen as I scroll through them. Um, and then I'm just gonna ask you for answers. Most of them are free answer. Uh, you can answer multiple times, but each, it'll show you, it'll say two hundred characters per answer, but if you wanna just kind of do a stream of consciousness, one big answer or multiple small ones, um, it's really your choice. And this is a kind of a, an easy way for us to capture all of the ideas at one time. And then we can look at some of the answers and see if there's anything y'all wanna talk about. Um, but before I start with the questions, I do wanna say that, um, and Tracy mentioned this. This is really about the what, the, the what question, right? I mean, we can talk about who, or why, or how, but tonight is really about getting to the what. What does the council, uh, what do each of you envision for Old Town in twenty forty? So those are two, the two things, right? What in twenty forty? So it's, you know, as the mayor said, this is not a, a next year or maybe even a five-year plan. Some things might, could happen in that timeframe. But really, if somebody asked you, if you were walking around in twenty forty and somebody asked you, hey, what's this Old Town? How would you answer them if you're standing there in twenty forty? What does Old Town mean to you and to Capel? So with that kind of setup, um, want to go ahead and start the questions. Um, and the first four are gonna be focused on the tour of the downtowns. Um, as the mayor mentioned, we went to, uh, North Richland Hills, Collieville, South Lake. I know, um, Councilmember Walker, you were, you weren't able to attend, uh, Councilmember Matthew as well. But if you've been to South Lake, you've been to Collieville, um, just reflect on your experience there. Uh, and so the first one is, what did you like most about what you saw in these other centers? And that's very open-ended, I realize that. Um, and it, it could be something that we, that Old Town already includes. It could be something that's already there. Um, we're just, I just wanna start with the feedback around what you saw on that tour. And there's a lot of discussion during the tour. Um, and, you know, we got out and, and walked around a little bit and talked to some folks, so, um, just feedback. You should start seeing your, your answers pop up. It is all anonymous, right? So the idea is just to get it all up there. Give it a couple minutes. So. Ready to move to the next question? All right, what constraints or challenges did you observe or hear about? You know, we had conversations with, uh, Craig and Adrian about their experience in the development of North Richland Hills and Collieville. So what you heard, what you observed, again, could be very similar to, to Old Town.
Yeah.
All right, we're good? And pick it up. Really want to ask the answer, it depends on plans. Now we're good? Move on, all right? Very good. So what would attract you to visit one of these centers? And probably most of them has been the South Lake, um, North Richland Hills, um, their, their new, their new developments, a little more off the beaten path, hometown, a lot of residential. So what would make you go and visit one of those downtowns? Or what has enticed you to go visit one of those centers? Be anything. Again? This is a little more directed at Old Town. So what are the features that you observed in the tour, on the tour, that you would like to see in Old Town? Are there anything, uh, or any of these first four questions, anything you want me to go back to? Um, anybody who wants to either add to their answers or something you wanna discuss? Uh, this is your, your meeting. This is just a, an idea collection tool, so I don't want it to be all about the, the poll. Um, if there's something you would like me to go back to, kind of look at the answers, and you wanna discuss at this point? If not, then we're, we're going into more, more focus on, on Old Town specific. Good, all right. Here's the beginning. What is your vision for Old Town in fifteen years? Day, night? Those individually or combined? In this one, I, I should have said, the, the way you might wanna think about this question is, what's the tagline for Capel in twenty forty, right? You had a, kind of a one or two sentence response to what is, what is Old Town? How would, what would that be for you, for your vision? Anything up there that y'all would like to discuss before I move on? And what'll happen at the end of the meeting is, I mean, we're gonna go back and look at all these responses and try to find where there's commonality sources. Yeah.
They all up there?
Yeah, there's, there's more than this thing.
And foxes. Russian student.
Twenty, twenty-six people, uh, slide.
That's it. I don't say that. I've got less responses, and I can. It's the second one in the room.
That, that icon over there, technology seven hole. Uh, is that the number of people connected to this board? You should have eight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there could be a lag. I don't know what's explained.
It should come up.
Is that, is that up there now, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there, it, yeah, we may. Yeah, there, yeah, we may be, we may be experiencing our, the fact that we're working off of hot spots. So, okay. Alright, on to the next question. This one is a multiple choice response. Please pick up to select five, it won't let you select more than five. But what must change in Old Town to achieve your vision?
And one of the new closer.
Click on top to skip ahead.
Yeah.
I had that wrong too.
Thank you. Up to, you know, have to pick five, they won't let us select more than five.
Yeah.
Mine, since the presenter hasn't changed slides yet.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the lag with connectivity.
Yeah, stupid.
Found this one.
So you're not seeing this slide?
No, sure, not now. I was, I voted.
You voted. Okay, yeah, you voted, yeah, you're, alright, yeah, that'll be fine.
Now you're just waiting on us, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Oh, okay. This is a little different question. What features of the current Old Town, so I think the ones there today, would you like more of in 2040? Yes, Ryan, sorry. Got other more answers up? Anything we want to discuss?
Yeah, just something that, that I'm, I'm just kind of quickly seeing is, I see more, like, a lot of owner-operator type of businesses. So just something I'm just noticing that's rising to the surface is specifically being called out. So this observation.
Everybody good?
More local.
Yeah.
But what features of Old Town today would you like to see less of in 2040? Good on the answers. Anything up there we want to discuss? There's some things definitely that are starting to show up. I mean, I think, you know, what we will, the hope is that this, this starts to gel around what, so that we can come back with how, develop some ideas around how that vision, or how that, those desires could be met over time.
You can't push that to the comment. Yeah, because you, so interesting, so businesses closing early comes up, right? And I think there is a, a want for things to stay open a little later, right? We also have the residential piece to that, so, and there's some things that would have to change along the way. I think the comment I wanted to make is that we also have that issue or that concern with even restaurants outside of Old Town. So I want to be mindful that that's not only an Old Town concern, right? But we've also got that outside of Old Town. So just an observation that there aren't very many places to go to in or outside of Old Town past. Or I could be wrong, I'll get pardon.
No, I'm certain, is that by choice or is that by, here, we had ordered, so you have to vote it?
I think that's my choice.
I think it's largely due to the business types.
So there's only certain things that we can, right? Like, I mean, even J Mac closes early now, right? For different reasons. So there's only certain things within our control.
Right.
But, but I'm fine.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what we will come back to in January is some of the how, right? Whether it's policy changes or whatever those influence, whatever the city can do to influence a mix or whatever, you know, whatever we land on, on the what, or you land on, on the what. It's the how do you then get that? How do you maybe change policies or recruit or whatever that looks like on the how part? We'll bring that back to you in January with some ideas and options, as well as continuing the discussion on, on the what.
Yeah, just a comment. You know, I know, you know, obviously, Cappell is a veteran community, and you know, lots of families, lots of children there. So, you know, I do think that we, if we focus on just Cappell internally, there may be limited critical mass, if you will, to, to support certain restaurants being open. But I do know that Old Town, in the surveys and discussions, you know, they were kind of open to a little bit more nightlife. So, you know, maybe it does have to start with, you know, we talk about policy, right? But maybe there's some sort of incentive for staying open a little bit later. And then I think there might have to be some sort of programming, if you will, to bring people down. And I may be thinking like, maybe a Friday, Saturday type of situation, if you will, there's certain programming to get people to come down, and then casting a wide net. Because if we're just relying on Cappell citizens, that might not be enough critical mass. So maybe, you know, looking at casting a net to our neighbors, like a Great Vine and, you know, Irving and things like, and bringing them kind of into that, that Old Town area specifically for programming the nightlife. I mean, we have a regional draw in our art center. There's no reason why the types of restaurants and, you know, the entertainment that we put out couldn't be a regional draw as well. But we're, again, we're selective about the programming in the win.
So to your plan, the art center is doing a regional draw as is Heart Aide.
Yeah, yeah, you can't forget about our.
So, you know, I think that there's some validity to that. And, you know, to, I think part of what the retail coach, what I remember was Cappell's not big enough to support, you know, the vision of what we're talking about with Old Town. So it's almost going to push you into a little bit out of the, maybe not a true regional, but a quasi-regional, or out of the, out of the direct neighborhood approach.
Back to what they were saying, Cypress Waters is doing a little bit of that, so we don't have the whole school flower. And I'm all for coffee, that would be his, if he could close for us.
I think you got on your point. You do see a lot of musical acts, you know, they have Dallas's, you know, alcohol rules, you know, they have freedom of walkability, but even between, you know, you have the restaurant kind of fronts, if you will, and then on the backside where you have the music venues, you have walkability where people can grab a beverage, grab a snack and walk around. And, you know, they got the human pincushion things for the kids to play with. And so I just think about those types of things that it has to be, we have to have a wide draw, if you will, you know, like, you know, you go pick up, you know, take the kids, load them in the car, maybe go grab mom and dad, and you've got, you know, the, the whole family, I mean, like, so maybe you've got three generations of people going out and, and hanging out for the evening and stuff. And the kids have stuff to do, the adults can talk, but there's that stickiness. I think that's what, I think a lot about, like, people go to an Old Town and they, you know, they're going to go pick up this thing, and they're going to go watch the show, or they're going to go grab a bite to eat, and then it's just, we need to generate some sort of stickiness to stay down here for longer. And generate that business. Whether they allow, apologies.
It's okay, what you're supposed to be doing. What we want. Yeah, we need to, I mean, we need to hear that vision, because if it's different, if the vision is different than what is there to say, then, you know, what, what we want to get to is what that vision is. And, and then we can, we can figure out how to get there.
It would be very cool to have Old Town kind of maybe be known for like, like, if you wanted to do something on, on Friday evening or on a Saturday, like, you just know there's stuff going down, you know, down there with between the farmer's market and shows at the art center and retail restaurants. Maybe you don't even know what's on the, you know, on the agenda or on the schedule or what show's playing, but you know you can go down there and find some entertainment. I think that would, if it, if it was to be able to be known for that, that would help greatly.
Any other thoughts on the slide? So we had a little bit of discussion around some of the slides, some of the questions. This one is very open-ended. What else would you like to share about the future of Old Town? Again, what do you see it being in 2040? We've collected, you know, you have all the data sources, we have the community survey, we have the, the, the community meeting on Old Town. We've done the tour. Do you have any other, any other thoughts? This is our last question. Are there any that you would like for me to go back, have another shot at them? I can run through them real fast. Anything from the tour?
Back to that last slide that you were on, just like the other box, unless anybody has.
All good?
Yeah. I think the one observation on that last slide, I think it's just a curious observation. It made, it made the statement of like, Old Town is our best opportunity to invest, or investment, or something like that. And I guess my observation is, I'm curious if that is actually the case. Because there are other areas of town that could also be invested that are developing, evolving. But do we just walk into thinking that there's a problem with Old Town? And maybe there's not as big a problem as there is, as we think there is. And maybe there's not as big a problem as there is, as we think there is. But there are other areas of town that could also use investment or could also be. Good opportunities because things in those other areas are evolving and changing also. So just an observation that I'm finding curious that. The 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 statement is made that's our best option. I don't know.
I can think about, but what um, community was it? One, one of the people that that with basically said that they were trying to develop two areas at the same time.
Two strips of retail.
And they basically, I think the the gentleman that we spoke to said that because we they were trying to do. Two of one, it was almost like their, they were trying to divide and conquer and it limited their resource and their growth opportunity. So. You know, to your point. You know, I wondered it. You know, like. And we're talking about a investment in the city, whether that be land acquisition or programming or, you know, but whatever that looks like. I do want to make sure that we're not trying to spread ourselves too thin, you know, like and try to, we're gonna develop Old Town and we're gonna, you know, I. I think about areas that probably, like, I think about our. We were talking before about our Beltline and Beltline and Southwestern and that tap intersection there like. You know, with the incoming Dart Rail, you know, would that be? More prime for retail growth, you know, there's. You know, we're seeing a revital revitalization down at MacArthur and Beltline, uh, we've got some. In the woods, so, yeah, so, you know, we've we've got some. You know, some some road down there. I mean, you got that fancy new gas station that looks awesome, uh. Uh, you know, but you know, is there an opportunity for that public private? Partnership to be able to grow some of those and, you know, incentives or things like that. So just kind of thinking out loud, but. You know, with with our scope being on Old Town is. Kind of back to your point, I do think Old Town probably needs the biggest push. Based on the current traffic counts that we have and the current limitations, if you will, I think we're able to tap into some of our. Um, transportation networks with. One twenty-one and six thirty-five, we're in the phone down to Old Town. The one that's down there, then number two, uh, how easy is it to access from those areas? So there's a lot of messaging, I think, that would be required. Uh, to activate it, you know, the map standpoint.
I guess. I guess I probably do struggle a little bit with exactly what is the problem case with Old Town. Um, in some ways. I think it's relatively successful. Uh, and so what is it really prompting us to say? No, it needs to be fixed or revitalized or energized or activated or whatever. I mean, not saying that there aren't, there's a lot of areas in town that. We could say that about. So sometimes I guess I wonder what is the real problem case with Old Town. Just because it's on twenty forty plan, so gone back to your previous thing, uh, there are other areas in Copel. That we could uh, have better investment opportunities. Uh, what were a couple of things that come to your mind? Like which other areas? I always focus on four, uh, once upon a time they were called hotspots or hotspots or intersections in town. Uh, the two southern ones, I think are. Could also use some energizing activation. You know. Bush or something also. So and those are sort of. Well, one more than another is sort of an entrance to the city, I would say. So I I guess that's what I look around. And not that there isn't stuff that can be done in Old Town, but it's like I, in some ways, Old Town is. It is a peaceful area. It was a nice. Area to go, I was there the other night at the art center for the ballet and. It's just a great setting. So in some ways, I think it's somewhat successful.
To your point, um. Yeah, what I what I found interesting when we did our site visits. Was that. Several cities had tried to do. What we've done and then what we're, we've talked about wanting to do and haven't um. Necessarily been successful. And then I think, I think South Lake is somewhat of an extreme. Um, and we and we've said that from the very beginning of. Like. Will we ever be a destination location, right? And that maybe is a question, do we want to be a destination location? Maybe for heartache, it has become that and for the art center, it has become that, but. What's that happy medium? I think we've done some things that we've done well. I struggle with the fact that there are hotspots that. I think need some attention um, in other areas. I think of Beltline and MacArthur. Um, and then if we're, if we, if there's more that we want. So I I struggled with the first question Tracy asked of, do you want something different? I struggled with that because I don't. I don't know that I would say like completely redo it and different, but maybe something more. Or to add to what we have or. Do some shift. So I struggled with that, but I hear where you're coming from, um. And then what does that look like? And how do we then get the people, like, how do we get the people down there on a regular basis so that our. Businesses are successful. And, you know, it was interesting because when we were on our visit. I made a comment, we were talking about Grapevine and I made a comment and I said, oh, we needed a spartan. Right? Just throwing out an idea and Minnie reminded me, and I think Minnie's here, but Minnie reminded me like, we had that. We we had a garrows. By as far as and it didn't make it, right? And so. Then. What do we do? Right? To make sure that what? Other cities have struggled with, which is it's a shiny penny, people go, they have one bad experience and then they don't go back. Right? How do we make sure that what does? Whatever's added is truly. Different and successful and adds value. And it's something that our citizens want because they can't just be dependent on the people from the outside. It's gotta be dependent on the people on the inside. So.
Oh, uh, I think the biggest difference here, you know, you're talking about the other hotspots in town is the art center. You know, I I I think that, you know, we have. Something that the city has already invested very head heavily and is, I would argue, very successful. You know, I mean, you you know, you know, you get the accolades and stuff like that and awards, but also I I think the people that attend shows there are very happy with it. Um. So I I think that's the, that's the difference. I think that's what brings us to the discussion is that. Does Old Town in its current form, like what's the newness of the art center wears off? If you will, and it's been a couple of years, um, does. Does the attractiveness of of that area go down? You know, we so we have to. We have to continually invest in the art center in terms of the proper programming to make sure that. You know, we're bringing in good acts and, uh, you know, that's gonna get people down there, but then. Is that a wasted opportunity if we get people down there to the art center? And then they're coming out, they're they're hungry and they want to have a beverage and stuff, and we don't have that opportunity for them. Is that a? Is that a missed opportunity, if you will? And so I think that's where. That's where the opportunity is specifically for Old Town is that when you, when you have something. You know, um. Let me, let's just be very honest, you do have certain people that, oh, the art center is out for me, right? Well, then, you know, do we have programming out on the lawn, you know, like on a Friday or Saturday evening, at a reasonable hour, so. Too late or anything like that, but. Where, you know, we have shows at the art center that are, you know, some are more popular than others. So do we have any uh, complimentary programming or counter programming if we know something might not be as popular? So again, to continue to have that consistency that I talked about earlier where. Well, it's Friday or Saturday night, I know something cool is happening with Old Town, let's just go down there and see, see what's happening. That's the difference between the other more hotspots in my, go get four ports.
It made a, I think, uh, now citizens always. Our our people are saying they like to uh, have a spot. Like, uh, they haven't talked like or Dallas downtown. So our our residents are going out and spending our. They're especially spending other other places. I think they're wanting to try to spend here. And in my mind, uh, Old Town has the potential to be kind of the flag bearer. For what we want the rest of GFW to think of our, uh, you know, maybe I I need from us. Uh, the current like where if you want something better than that, this is a good place to do that. And then if we don't uh, keep showing progress, um, my concern is that the rest of the. Uh, well, across the nation, people might see Copel just as a sleepy. Family town. It's not a bad thing, but if you want the cutting edge companies to reel up to Copel, we do need a shiny penny.
So. I'm not quite as ambitious as some others might be on this, um. You know, right now we've got really four pretty remarkable businesses that are bringing in people from all over North Texas. We've got two complementary businesses at Let It Shine and Tangerine, and they're seeing a lot of synergy between them. You know, a lot of people that finish up Tangerine will go shopping at Let It Shine and vice versa. So. Uh, they're both doing very, very well. Heartache's a big hit. Uh, thank goodness we're putting sales tax out of that place. So that's, that's certainly good. And then the art center is getting all sorts of, you know, regional renown. So we've we've. When you think about what the retail coach said, that like just an Applebee's requires a traffic count of ten thousand cars a day. So there's no way in the world we would ever get an Applebee's at Old Town. But organically, without any of that, we've developed four businesses that are already. You know, attractions from people from all over North Texas. And we did it without any incentives from the city at all. So, um, well, hard eight, sorry, I stand corrected. But, and I'm not against incentives to encourage businesses, but but most of that's been organic. And. You know. We also have the reality of the fact that the bulk of it is already residential. And the part that's not residential, a good part of that is all privately developed. So. When we're talking about what kind of businesses would we like to see there? Well, you know, the the dragon zone. A financial advisory company and, you know. John Geese comes, his financial advisory company and, you know, those are their businesses, but they're also their private property and. We didn't incentivize anything there. But they're nine to five, five days a week. So we we can't really expect from many of the, you know, the 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 medical clinics that we have, the veterinary clinic and the other. Uh, diagnostic building, you know, great businesses, but again, they're, you know, five days a week, nine to five. So so. The die is cast to a large extent with respect to what we can expect from what's already there, um. You know, the one thing that I see that I think is a huge opportunity. Is we, the city owns a pad site. It's next to a restaurant that's an established restaurant and uh, Twisted Root. It's next to a promised restaurant that we all hope one day, you know, build it and they will come. And all that backs up to what was really pretty cool, you know, uh, patio with live music and. Uh, really good ambiance and all like that. And. You know, personally, the one opportunity, and then we see the in the survey that we did, I mean, something like sixty-five to seventy percent of all the people in zone one, which was Old Town proper. Uh, and all people immediately around Old Town was zone two and everybody else in town that was zone three. We're all in the sixty percent plus to seventy percent. Wanting a full blown restaurant and bar that's open until two AM in Old. And the people that live in Old Town that I know, I wouldn't actually ask them about it. They're like, that's why we moved. But I mean, we we want that. So. I would think that one option we could have is to try to duplicate the organic success that we've already achieved. In Tangerine, Let Shine and and the Art Center and Twisted Root. I mean, they've hung in there and they're still, they're still there for us. I I'd like to bring something in to help keep them there. Um, I'd like to hire a headhunter and go find that. Restaurant. Uh, and get, and you know, at one point. You know, a restaurant was considered, it was so long ago, I think we had, uh. Maybe some hope for success that. Because we hadn't been doing it as long, but now we're here. I'd be willing to be very aggressive in getting an inducement to get a restaurant in there that would provide the, you know, the bar and entertainment. That would provide the outdoor patio, it would be a nightly kind of thing. That would allow all the residents that live there to walk there, have a nice meal and a pop and go home. Um, and then to generate more traffic that way. Uh, to be open for lunch, you know, one place we looked at, they weren't even gonna, you know, have dining, so. You know, they'll be open for lunch and dinner and have a bar and have. You know. Final four stuff going on and all like that, really attract a lot of people. I'd be willing to be very aggressive to get that because to me, that's in the realm of possibility. We own the property. You know, there's, we're in North Texas, it's, you know, you have a hundred thirty restaurants every year open and, you know, all but fifteen of them fail. Every year. So there's lots of potential candidates. We have a ton of established restaurants that would probably. Look at our market a little bit differently than they did ten or fifteen years ago. So I. I see that as a real opportunity. Beyond that, I, you know. I mean, I think having some more of the outdoor concerts, outdoor entertainment makes sense. Those are very popular, well attended. Supporting the art center makes a lot of sense. That's very well attended, very popular. Um. And, you know, hope that something on that corner and the corner across from it of Capel Road develops. In a way that helps to generate some more retail and some more food traffic. Um, but. You know, I I just don't know when when you ask me, well, what what can we do? I mean, well, it it's largely done. And, you know, the one opportunity that I see that's there, everybody says they want. And that's the one thing we don't have. Plus, if you think about it, if we had a place, it was a fun place to go eat, you could have, you know. Take all your friends after you finish a round of golf, have a bunch of food, a bunch of drinks, watch a football game or whatever, till ten or eleven o'clock at night. That would literally be the only place in town that would offer. So that would be the unique aspect of that that would draw people there. Combined with the fact that seventy percent of everybody in town says they want. So. That's one thing that I see that I think is doable. Uh, I think it's something that we could have some control and influence on because we own the property. Uh, we own the right to grant whatever inducements might be necessary to get them in. And then, you know, we can let that go to work and and complement through the businesses and. Uh, I think partnering with Chamber also to to do some. Cross marketing events and, you know, some fun things that that square on the scare on the square, they apparently very popular. Stuff like that really does well. So I I'm kind of in Don's camp. I. I think we've we've experienced a lot of success there. But if you're comparing us to, you know, Town Square McKinney. Uh, you know, they had the benefit of all those old buildings with the corporate in the middle, courthouse in the middle or, you know, Main Street Grapevine or. South Lake, which is a planned development, which is a huge bunch of acreage. I mean. I just don't see this. That that's really what we have or will ever have. I think what we do have is really nice and really good. And has succeeded despite a whole lot of efforts to influence and induce it in the city. And, uh, you know, Hard Eight was kind of that first big volley and it got us off the ground, but. I, that's where I would go. I would, I would find that restaurant that kind of provides everybody what they say they want. And I would. Be as aggressive as we need to be to get them in. And. You know, right now the property is not generating any tax, is not generating any revenue from the city at all. I mean, if, you know, I would be as aggressive aggressive as we needed to be if we had the right candidate, the established management team. You know, that was able of successfully running a restaurant, knew what they were doing and we had some assurance that they would be successful. So that's kind of my little pitch.
So I think everything you said could be done relatively quickly and easily. I mean, what I'm. And I'm not disagreeing with anything you said. But I would really like to see this thing out, you know, in twenty years now, not just the next two to three.
I mean, you know, like going, I saw one of the comments about going to Freeport. I mean, those. Those are relatively new construction warehouses, tilt wall warehouses, I mean. You, I just don't think it's plausible to suggest we're gonna buy those in bulldozers and convert it into a restaurant.
Let's stay up, let's stay away from the house.
But, okay, but but still the same thing, you have, I mean. There has to be some something plausible considering, uh, you know, at one point, I think it was proposed that we look at. That big warehouse on, uh, you know, south of the last row. I mean, that's a piece of underdeveloped property at this point that we can certainly consider.
And that's what all of these guys come back with us in in January and tell us whether. That are possible.
Yeah, but I mean. Again, beyond that, I mean, we're not gonna end up with a, you know, three hundred acre planned development like South. So I, so I I I think while it's great to talk about what we want to look like in twenty fifty, the fact is. You know, you'll see some of those businesses change hands and. You know, it's all private property, it's all private development. So there's there's certain pockets of it that we can. You know, it's all private property, it's all private development, so there's, there's certain pockets of it that we can influence, but I just don't see it.
Thirty years ago, when Capella was just a, on the outskirts of the airport. If the planning department hadn't taken and zoned the city the way it's zoned now, we wouldn't be where we are now. And so you say, you know, you're right, it is a, it is out in the future. Only you have to make the possibility of happening out in the future, and that's what, you know, we have to look ahead. You know, I don't think I'm gonna get there, I'm, I'm just, I'd like to be able to vision something, you know, uh, for the future.
Well, I know, and, and a lot of that success was because we insisted on all the same building materials and the same look and the same colors. We had a sign ordinance that every business hated, but it gave us a unified look that lets you know that you were in a, in a distinct community. So, you know, if the vision was that everything was gonna be, have a certain conformity, so you knew you, you were in Capella. I mean, people could have been critical and said, well, you know, that doesn't sound very exciting, but it got us where we are today. Particularly now that we've lost control over building materials and a lot of that, you know, there's already a set look, and so. A company like that, Texas, uh, uh, the Burger Company, the cattle, the Texas Burger, whatever is up there on one twenty-one. When they came in, they, they could have made that out of any color or anything they wanted, but they still chose. Kind of a burgundy brick and things that were in conformity with the look because it, it was in conformity with the rest of the community, so. I hear you, Wes, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to, you know, something creative or. Or something like that, but we're talking about a relatively small footprint of available, developable property. And we're talking about a very, even smaller sliver of that that we even own or have any control of. I mean, you know, you could talk about, well, we could tell everyone that owns the businesses now, that when you want to sell your business. We would be willing to incentivize certain buyers. And so we would incentivize a restaurant over another financial advisory company. But I don't know if we want to be in that business, but that's, that's one way we could try to influence the future with respect to what's already developed, but. You know, as a practical matter, I just don't think any plan suggests we're gonna go in and bulldoze everything and start over is plausible.
And she's had a hand up on the.
What, what land within Town Center or Old Town that we own, city owns? I know one spot that right in front of Georgia's, that's only land we own, right?
Right.
Everything else around there is private property.
Yes, okay.
Are we talking about developing that property and changing some policies to attract business to come?
Well, that, again, that's kind of the how, it's really the what.
Okay, and we gave approval for a builder, developer. Last six months ago or a year ago, to have a dual-purpose business at the bottom and housing at the top. And that did not proceed, so the builder or developer did not see that, they couldn't discuss more of that, right? Would be perceived with that?
Not public.
No, the zoning case, what's it, the zoning?
Uh, Chris Collins, right?
Yeah, so that is not perceived, correct? Not sure, okay, there, you're sitting right there, yeah, so that's a private property and we gave approval to. We continue with it, but that didn't follow through, so. We've been giving permission or approval to the businesses coming in, asking us, you know, they want to do something. But they don't see a profitable business going in there, or at least, at least from this account. So, do we need to change a policy?
Well, I, yeah, I, I think the point of tonight in this discussion. Is to, to people back when Old Town started, right, they set a plan. And moved forward with that plan and through time, and it adjusted. Approvals were made along the way, and so it changed a little bit, but overall, that original plan, that original vision is pretty close to what's out there today. And what we're asking is, is there a different vision? Is there, should there be a different plan for the next fifteen years, fifteen to twenty years? And so, if we know that there is a different plan, or there is a different vision. Then that gives you guideposts, um, when those developments come in. Does that meet the intent, right? Does that meet the vision? Um, that makes policymaking, um, it gives you something to point towards. As developments come in, um, you know, and we've asked, what is, what do you, what does Old Town? What do you see Old Town meaning to Capella in twenty forty?
So, one area too that I didn't mention that I think is still somewhat of a blank canvas is. Capella Road going north from that. Right, I mean, if, if there was, you know, we started with Old Town as an historic district overlay. And did not go with like a full-blown entertainment district when we started, so we had a lot of residential and what, and where, where we're at. But is there something that we could look at doing in terms of like recharging or rezoning? That part of Capella Road, up the Ruby or whatever.
Well, and that, uh, again, that gets to the how, right? And the question is, what do you, what's the vision for those areas?
Well, it'd be, it would be an opportunity to continue Old Town geographically, to expand its footprint.
So that was the vision, right?
And, and so my question would be, do you want Old Town to be bigger? That's the what?
I mean, I think that's a natural outflow, and I think that'd be more. Development standpoint, a little bit that I know about development, which is, would fit in a thimble. Um, as opposed to putting it on an active dark rail. Um, I mean, that, the, the old warehouse on the south end is gonna be right up against an active rail, so. Um, I don't know, I mean, you know, maybe a beer garden, but I, you know, I, I mean, there's certain businesses that would be able to. To be fine with that, there's other businesses that probably wouldn't, so.
But again, you know, I, and I, I tend to interrupt, but again, the, thinking about those businesses today. Those might be completely different businesses in fifteen years, so the real question is, do you, you know, is, is. Is the vision to expand Old Town to the north? And then, if so. We'll talk about how we get there.
More so than some other, more so than going east, south of party. Or going west and, I mean, going east, you know, toward the senior center, or going west, you know, south of party, I don't see those as being particularly. Vital options.
Got a rematch over here? So, I like that, that, um, while it's great, we have the option to, to grow Old Town. Uh, but I would first like to see that the, the current businesses are successful in generating. Sales tax revenue for the city, um, and whether we like it or not, um. We, we have few, maybe successful businesses, but we do have, uh, other businesses that are not successful. Uh, if, if restaurants can come and be more successful, I think eventually they'll, they'll may replace those office buildings. Um, so I think of, uh, what we need to do in the next two, three years is create an environment. Where majority of businesses can succeed, and if, if that happens, then we can have this discussion about. Growing north or west or wherever we'd want to grow. But to grow would be the long-term plan, but I won't start by having such as with what we have in place for it.
All right, here we go, let's just fire out some, some wood, right, I, I, we're not talking how, right, but. A vision that I would love to see is, and people have spoken, is. Um, I see an expansion of Old Town over fifteen to twenty years. Um, and, you know, that could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a forced timeline, you know, if, if something comes available or, or things like that. That's when we could move towards that. I think that we have a critical mass issue, is I think about the businesses that are currently there. And would they, would they benefit if there were more people down there on a regular basis? I think, I say yes. I think that they would, uh, you know, you're letting shine into the world, you know, they're, they're doing great, but would they be doing even better? If there were more people down there, so I think about, um. So that would require investment from the city. Strategic invest, investment, let me, like, and I think strategic about, like. Subsidizing Hard Eight to get there, now Hard Eight is a regional draw, like crazy. Putting the Art Center down there, being very strategic about adding a few more pieces to that. And then getting more people down there through programming, through events, um, you know, uh, expansion of pop-ups and the, uh. Um, the farmer's market that happens on Saturday, like, anything that will, will draw people down there. And we get more people down there, we increase that critical mass, that's going to show. The private sector the value of that, and then that's where that comes in, so. I think there, we are literally in a chicken and the egg type of situation, and if, if we build it, will they come? I, I think that they will, but I, you know, I, I think that they're, if we, as long as we're strategic about what goes down there. Which, uh, you know, incentivizing that awesome restaurant, you know, or something like that, that could be. Another piece of the puzzle, uh, if a warehouse came available, is that a great spot if we've got the proper, uh, regulations in place? To put a brewery in or a beer garden down there, where we could have, again, more critical mass of people. So, I think that if we're talking long-term vision. Having the open-mindedness to expand the borders of Old Town. Look north, I, I think looking north on Capella Road is important, I, I, I think connecting that area a little bit more to Old Town is important. So there could be natural expansion, you know, up there, but we can do that from a regulation standpoint, or, you know, policy standpoint, if you will. But I do think that we need to add a couple more critical pieces to get more people down there. To then, uh, have that kind of natural, but it's gonna, it's gonna require investment on our part. I'm not saying a huge investment upfront, it can be over time, strategic, but I think that is the, is the fifteen to twenty-year vision. Is that we, we can't be afraid to expand the borders, we can't be afraid to go get that, that awesome restaurant. Uh, we can't be afraid to, to expand programming options down there, get people down there on a regular basis and. Challenge our citizens, because, uh, uh, people may or may not know, where our hands are kind of, like, we can't just wave the magic wand and now we can have a brewery. We do have to have that citizen participation to, uh, get those alcohol laws changed, get that across the finish line, so. That's gonna be, have to be a citizen-led, uh, initiative, but I think all of those things together, fifteen to twenty years, I think that Old Town. Would be awesome, you know, to go down there and, and put a business down there, because you know that you're gonna have a, a, a large amount of people. Also, I'm talking, sorry.
Okay, and one of the things, um, is. Whatever y'all bring back, um, because I, I presume there'll be different alternatives, you'll look at the different answers and things and for. An option like increasing the footprint, um, I, I should say this out loud, I know you guys are gonna be thinking about it, but. Uh, it's also, there's not just incentivizing finding that right business and being willing to. Invest, but there's also the investment around the infrastructure. And what does that look like and what can be done in that area, because when Old Town was originally designed, right? We've got two-way lane, or two-way, two-lane road on Bethel, and. I know you've got other potential entrances, but I just wanna be mindful of. What are we, what are we looking at and? What does that, what does it look like for investing, increasing, maintaining going forward?
To your point about Bethel being a two-lane road, you know, I do think about Bethel being the. Kind of the Capella entrance of Old Town, if you will, and looking at, um, you know, the. You know, Bethel and Hard Eight, you know, it's expanded four lane, and we have Freeport right there, that's four lane as well. Those are like your, your gateway entrances, if you will, from, from our Irving and Grapevine neighbors, so I, I think that we have the infrastructure there. And in the right direction to bring people in, um, you know, and. Say that, you know, say that the, the did-tap entrance for the Catholicism.
I guess backing up one step further, though, I guess I wanna be real clear, like, if, if we, let's say we decided that we wanted to expand. The boundaries of Old Town, I guess I still go back to the question, to what end, I mean, what are we ultimately trying to accomplish? Even if it is a fifteen to twenty-year, and are we looking to be more of a destination like South Lake or Grapevine or. Uh, increase foot traffic, you know, get more people down there and everything, because I, I, you know, one of the places we visited, I would say they. Made some beautiful buildings and some really peaceful, nice-looking areas, and they're all sitting empty, and that was with a lot of. Pouring in a lot of infrastructure, so, uh, you know, there were some challenges there, um, so that, I don't want to. I don't want us to overlook the fact that I think we have something successful down there, so just by making it bigger. Even over twenty years, crossing Freeport or whatever that might look like. I guess I wanna know to what end, what is the ultimate end, just to have. Place that we're bringing people all the metroplex behind, or just a bigger Old Town? Does that make sense? I mean, what was the ultimate? Desire here, uh, for making it bigger, if that's, if that's what we chose to do.
Tonight's the start, tonight's the start to try to answer that.
Mark, did you have your hand up? Uh, yeah, you know, I think, you know, I think the. Big question is, we, we've made such a large investment into that area, and. It is somewhat successful, there, there's. Circle business down here, but we. We sunk all that money in there and we built a art center, which is a key piece. Um, to, I, I think, uh. Continue that, um, growth and synergy, uh, I think adding to that. Um, it, it's necessary because of some of those missteps that we've made. I, I think, uh. Allowing that much residential, uh, was, it's not the right step. Types of our original plans. Um, I. I would like to know from staff, did, have we heard from Chris why he was not able to move forward?
I, I, I can't say, because I don't know, and I'm looking at it, and I don't know, she goes, and he happens to speak.
Can he speak?
Yeah, and I, I don't, if you have your, if your comment is complete, um. I was just gonna say, I think staff has gotten the feedback we were hoping for tonight around kind of the vision, uh, and we'll. We'll find where is those, that feedback overlaps and come back to you in January. Um, the, you know, the, we, we did not expect to have this, like, walk out of here, like, here it is, let's go, tonight. Uh, what we wanted to do is try to find some overlap in the feedback, so that, um. But that there's enough to be, begin moving if council, uh, wants to move. And that's where we'll come back with, how we, you know, what that looks like and how we would. Um, propose or what those options would be in order to, to move forward on, on some of those common elements. That's, we're good.
We'll, we'll say closing comments for just a moment, we did have, um. I, I wasn't finished with mine, so we, we don't have feedback from Chris. Well, we're gonna get it right now.
So we can have feedback from Chris.
Well.
But after, you will, only after the meeting is closed?
Yes, sir. People will let me continue.
Okay.
I will explain how we're gonna do that.
Okay.
So we did have some people visit our signup sheet.
Ah, okay.
And so they have signed up to speak.
Okay.
And so we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a, a revision of item number two, citizens' appearance. And, uh, persons wishing to speak, assign the register and list their address, which they have done. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to no more than three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called into audit if they signed up, no personal attacks. Any speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual group or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council, uh, through the Texas Open Meeting Record Act. However, your, I think your comments were clearly heard, and Mr. Collins is number two on the list, so. Perhaps he can be encouraged to address some of your questions when he gets up to speed.
Okay.
All right, so uh, we do have five people that have signed up to speak.
But Mark wasn't done.
Oh, also after that, the mea- the meeting will continue?
Yes.
Cause you mentioned closing comments and
Well, a- after the, after the people have a conclusion and, and you can you can have any, you can make any comment you want to at that thing.
Related to Old Town.
Yes.
Always keeping this girl sorry to go.
We're getting you really off track here. All right, so um, you, number first person signed up to speed up here, it's Karen. Okay, and I'm gonna, do you have the timeline? Oh, well, I, I can put my phone up then. So we did change our, our, our rules last, and so we're limited to three minutes with no extension.
All right, so firstly, um, I'm glad that there seems to be consensus that you feel like we should invest in Old Town and keep it going. Even on the long-term fifteen year, cause you could have sat there and said, just leave it alone, that uh, in its own time. That's good news. I will encourage you, cause I heard a lot of what, what can we do, the privately-owned houses, the property of companies? What can the city itself do? There's so much you can do, um. I think it comes down to traffic. So think about this, you've got all these houses, residential's around the square. Imagine if those all became retail over time. If those start to go up for sale and a business comes to the city and says, I wanna put a business on my retail shop, I mean, I wanna put whatever it may be in there. You guys have the power to say, let's resell it, let's operate, let's incentivize that. So fifteen years time, you could have a fantastic sphere with, with retail all around there, so that type of thing. But to do that, you're gonna have the traffic, nobody's gonna buy a million-dollar house sitting there. And this is traffic and you can make business work. So your job is to, as long with, along with us as property owners, is to bring the traffic. So I know, I know we're not talking about how, but I'm gonna give a couple of thoughts, right? I think you've gotta think about this as a business. Your job is to attract that traffic, so advertise, make the, make the area look attractive. It's not Instagram today. Let's go and see Old Town, see what we hear in Old Town, where, where is it? What is it? We don't, you know? So make it Instagram, do landscaping, make flowers on the pots, do art installations, make it something that people can see. That's all within the city power and not expensive. Um, staying open, open later, I think that's very key to businesses, save it serious, close early. Taxes seem to solve that problem. Sales tax, property tax cuts uh, or cap, should I say, solves that, because we're just paying an hourly wage of whatever it is fifty bucks an hour. If I need to put somebody in there for three hours every day, you guys can help us do that, but so don't, again, it's within your, within your power. Alcohol, winery, beer garden, absolutely. If you think about that piece of open land that the city owns, that's what you gotta do there. People want to go somewhere, we all do, right? It's, it's a rough day, just wanna go sit down and drink, when Doney's closed, where do we go? Right, so you'll get people there and you get the traffic there and then the shops will open. Because hey, there's enough people here, maybe I'll just keep them and try to open them till ten o'clock. Cause it's traffic, you're just to bring the traffic, I'm just to provide the the reason to be there. And also lastly, Balmers Market is great, Senator Orange of fantastic for traffic. Everything else? Sorry, limited. So we see it on Saturday morning, we just, we struggle the rest of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Second person is Mr. Chris Collins, and I was just reminded that you need to give your name in on the rest of the record.
So my name is Chris Collins, I live at two seventeen Greenwood in Capel, Texas, and very interested to be here this evening. Um, I've had a lot of questions, I've talked to several of you guys on the, just as we're passing about what has gone on in Old Town with the two developments that you guys have approved, um. Bring you up to speed on the woodworks. So we had the first woodwork under contract. Started the construction on the project, surprise, wife was pregnant, they said, we can't do this right now. Since that time, we've talked to at least fifteen to twenty different potential businesses about that one building and the other buildings that we've yet to build. I've been asked several times, why aren't all four of them done? It's real simple math. Um, one of my banker friends happens to be around, it was gonna cost one point three million dollars to build all five buildings. When interest rates were four percent, that wasn't so bad. When interest rates jumped to ten percent, we're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in interest to carry. We just got the tax bill on the building that's there, twenty-seven thousand dollars. Guess what? Cost to carry for private investors is astronomical. So that's where the woodwork is currently. We've tried to find out if there were some grants that the last business, we met with Matt and several of the city, we found a bread company that's here in Capel that wanted to move out of their garage into the building. Wasn't cost-effective. We were within about seventy to eighty thousand dollars and they would have been able to move forward. This wasn't gonna work for me. So this story has been repeating for the last two years on the woodworks. Brings me to what happened at Bethel Main after all the work that went into that. It took us fourteen months, two attempts through council, time kills deals. As soon as the um, demolition permit was approved, when we went to renegotiate with the seller, he raised the price by twenty-five percent. From one million, twenty-five thousand dollars to a million and a quarter. He just put that same piece of property on the market this past week at one point five million to the corner of Bethel Main. So if you wanna know what kills deals, time does. Have to be able to move quickly as an investor, because you have people doing it for a return. And obviously the economy, the timing on our woodwork, we started a note at four and a quarter. We paid the note off at eleven percent, is a twelve-month note. So that's why there's now five buildings waiting to be built. And we just have to wait for more favorable time. Um, as for the Bethel Main project, when the price went up, it shoots the deal down. So after listening and the role is being the Realtor and the developer on those two projects, some talk of relief for the businesses that are coming would be big. You talk about investing in those businesses, coming up with something.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Third person signed up to speak is uh, is Chris Long.
I apologize that I wanted to sit, I hurt my knee, so I apologize for that. My name is Chris Long, I live at seven ten South Capel Road. Um, and I wanted to say a couple of things, all positive. And first of all, I wanna say, and we haven't said this really, but the scare on the square and vintage Christmas that the city puts on is phenomenal and it brings so many people down there that have never been down there before. And so those are just two instances where the city has done just a remarkable job with those projects. The other thing I'd like to point out is that the Capel Historical Museum, which is what I'm here for. Um, we have three events during the year that bring in over seven hundred people. And those seven hundred people eat at the diner, they do a lot of things in Old Town. And this last one we had, which was a Hispanic festival, we got a lot of buzz on Facebook. And what we have found is, we should have known this, right, but what we have found is that it got tagged Old Town Capel Latina Festival. And the Old Town Capel is what started the buzz and people came back and said, well, I didn't know there was funding Capel and I didn't know, and so we have historically not used the Old Town label on our, our posts, we are starting to do that because it gets us more traffic. Um, so you know, we're hoping, you know, at some point in the future, we can have a festival maybe once a month. We're looking for funding for that, but I know that's not the nighttime thing that you want, but the last festival we had, we had people from Irving that were involved in the festival. Irving, Grapevine, Louisville, so it's coming from all different areas. When we did the Hock of the Spring, which is the one that we hunt Easter eggs, it makes us all kind of insane for it's over. Um, last year we had over a thousand people and they were from Valley Ranch in Grapevine. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people and they were just from everywhere, so it's crossing over and most of them say to me, I've never been down. So we keep in our store, uh, we keep the uh, information on all the businesses in Old Town. And so, you know, you wanna go eat, here's, this is very good down there. And I know that one of them we had, uh, diner was just overwhelmed, I know, cause I tried to go eat there, that wasn't happening. Um, so we are trying, even though we're not in your project, we're not something you're considering, but just so you know, we are driving a lot of traffic down there. And it's really interesting to watch because it's fun and people walk around and we can say, go do this and go do this. And so I'd just like to tell you that we're doing that when you're, I mean, we're not your plan, but it is happening to that. So I just wanted to say that, cause it's really cool.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dan Koller.
My name is Dan Koller, I live in five-two-one Anderson Avenue with my stunning wife and our two frustrating sons. That address is within walking distance of Old Town, I walk there all the time. When I'm not listening to y'all or your counterparts at the Bane of Life Administration Building, I spend a lot of time listening to the ticket, the all-sports radio station that just won the Marconi Award, the Oscar of radio, the best major market station in the country. One or two times a year, the Terrell Economic Development Corporation, whatever that is, pays for the ticket to come to Terrell for an entire day and broadcast from there to promote businesses in Terrell. And I would love to see Capel do that. I envision the morning show hanging out at George and then the midday show is broadcasting from the Capel Deli and the early afternoon show is at Hard Eight. And then you pick a day where there's something going on at the art center that would be strategic to this effort and the early evening, late afternoon show broadcast from the lobby of the art center. I don't know how much that costs, I don't know if you guys are gonna have extra hot taxes when you do the budget for next year, but I think it'd be something to throw some money at. Don't tell me that there's something Terrell can do that Capel cannot. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Our next and last speaker is uh, Mr. Christian Hemberger.
I hope I read that last one correctly. Hey, I've heard it worse. Uh, Christian Hemberger, six oh four Lock, also walking distance from Old Town, six around Harpsburg Hard Eight. Uh, my wife and I own George, uh, and we wouldn't be here if it weren't for the council saying we believe in the vision of a Capelian or whatever we call ourselves. So the one thing I wanna lead off with, that I hear about the twenty twenty vision or twenty forty and beyond, I see, I hear what, I hear how, I hear ideas. I really wanna ask you guys to go back to thinking about why, like, why are, is Capel here? What is, why is the council here? What is the mission statement? Or what, what the city is? And, and I had to Google it. And turns out the city council mission statement is the same as the city's mission statement, so I'm gonna start with that. To provide a foundation for building a better community by prioritizing the health-saving quality of life for its citizens. And when I hear all these other ideas, Cypress Water, South Lake, that's just not realistic, that is not what Capel is. I'm curious the why, is it our pride? Do we want to think that we can like outshine South Lake because their football team's better than ours? And because we have a better, like, we're not gonna get more, more apple than apple or more, you know, than the places that they have over there. I don't think we need to be South Lake, I think Capel needs to be Capel, South Lake needs to be South Lake. Harilton needs to be Harilton, Grapevine needs to be Grapevine, and so we press into what makes Capel great, and it is a bubble, it is a family community. They say they want something where they can go drink till two AM, they do not, because their kids need to be in bath by eight thirty or their lives are shot the next. We've all been there. George started closing earlier, we sell beer and wine, no one was buying it unless we had special events. People were just not coming on their own to unwind, they can do that from their grocery store and in their house. But the festivals, the green space, my goodness, today I was on a walk over the, the baseball fields, the nature parks, the Grapevine Springs. We have so many beautiful places where people can get and they can be and they can go. We have walkability. I walk miles every day through Old Town. Um, I think what we have an opportunity to do is find some, we have educated, committed, established families in the city that want to leave the grind, they wanna do what my wife and I did and they want to invest in a dream and they wanna make an investment, a gift into their city to make it a better city for itself. We are a regional draw, I have no idea why fifty people come to us on a Monday morning at ten AM from all over, but they do. And I think, and we didn't pay for no advertisement, y'all haven't advertised us. Three minutes is unrealistic. But when you have something beautiful, people are gonna come and they're gonna tell other people about it. And so I said, make an investment in the, the city itself, the families that are here, we have ideas, we are educated. We can make Old Town.
Well, thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, um, that was, that's actually the end of our agenda, so were there any closing comments, Mark? Did you have anything you wanted to comment on or touch on?
Well, what I've heard from Chris was exactly what I expected, it was, was marked and it was some um, interest rates impacted, you know, people all across the board. And, and I, but honestly, I, I still believe in that concept uh, going in there on that quarter. And now hearing that that piece of property has gone up so high, it's probably gonna sit vacant for a long, long time.
Well, that, that was, um, that was the uh, the leader, Eric Casium, who was very, very new here to, to talk about, what is the cost of dirt?
Yes.
And he would lecture us for a while on that, so very hypersensitive to that, I think that's to your point there. The price being quoted is pretty high right now.
But you know, we, we do own some dirt and I think if we just um, wait for the right opportunity, maybe not wait, but um, like uh, Jim said, you know, we go out there and we try to find the right opportunity to come in.
So just keep in mind that we have done, we have tried that before. What we didn't do was something that, that I'll throw up, you know, they take some incentives, make that really go. Kind of like we did with Hard Eight. And that's where we ended up having trouble last time. So just keep that in the back of your mind, you know, if, if that's the vision, even short-term, we may have to, you know, we may have to do something to make that happen.
So taking incentives to develop a lot. I should ask in the, the city staff for use for that, so.
All right, anybody have anything else? Jim?
I think uh, Mark made a good point, I think there are some things that we could do aesthetically um, down there and that, you know, that is not as uh, a huge expense item, but I think I think there's quite a few things we could do to improve the aesthetics and, and uh, and, and not so to speak, I think that's, that was a good idea. Uh, I, I stand by my earlier comment, I, I'm willing to be aggressive to locate a restaurant that meets, you know, this overwhelming demand you've told us about. Um, and to generate more traffic down there. And I'm, you know, maybe we should talk to people trying to leave space down there right now about what we can do to try to get the right tenant in there, I mean, you know, that, that's gonna generate traffic, um, as a way to be a little bit more aggressive too. Um, I think anything that generates traffic is good, and it sounds also like these events are really popular. And they're very successful in generating traffic and uh, whether it's historical society op, you know, that's conducting them or whether it's the city conducting, it sounds like we need to focus on increasing those, because those appear to be quite successful.
Well, I've been given this considerable amount of thought since September, back, we toured the neighboring cities. And the one thing that was clear to me, and I, you know, I, I'm not a real estate guy, I don't, I'm not a, I don't own a business. But to be successful, we're gonna have to have methods and incentives. For foot traffic during the day and at night, it's gonna have to be both, and, and it can't be one or the other, it's gonna have to be both. So the, the events are, are, you know, part of that during the day, the businesses that are open are, are part of it. Um, I also think that you have to have other things at night as well, that make it go, so. Well, that's restaurants and our bars and there are some of them, so. And I, I don't have that, I don't have the answers to that, I wasn't trying to come up with, uh. Ramesh?
And give me a, um, it's probably a question for Mike or Ken or Tracy. Uh, assuming that the art center has, uh, the ability to sell alcohol. When we have events, um, in, in, in the square. Uh, can we redirect traffic to go get a glass of wine from the art center?
We actually have done that, they'll set up the bar, as, but they can't take it off the art center's property. So they, they have set up bars, or, um, outside the art center. To facilitate that, but the, the current rules are you can't take it off the property. That's where the, that's one who said we needed changes to the alcohol rules, that's what I'm talking about. But yes, we've done that. Kevin?
Uh, I wanted to thank our, uh, our citizens for, uh, coming up and speaking, I, I appreciate y'all's thoughts. Um, I do agree with Mr. Eric about, uh, foot traffic and that critical mass that I was thinking about earlier, I think that's key, so I. I definitely, uh, Jim, to your point, programming, meaning. Events, activities, uh, I'm so glad that I heard Scareless Square was a huge hit, uh, you know, this past weekend, so. It's just growing every year, so, but I will say that Scareless Square has taken a couple of years to build up momentum. And there's consistency that is required, and I think. I think that kind of brings us back to the point of this conversation, is having that steady hand. Uh, if we're gonna make this commitment, council has to be committed to, you know, whatever that visioning looks like, so ultimately the vision is. Do we expand the borders and, uh, you know, to Mark's point. The retail, like, the, the ratio of residential to retail did get out of black during the original development of Old Town. And I do wanna, you know, kind of click on my comments about expanding borders, expanding the borders. For the purpose of trying to like get back that initial ratio, if you will. Um, and again, you know, with there being more houses down there, hopefully, again, more foot traffic, more programming, more events. Uh, more retail options, that helps, uh, Old Town grow, uh. You know, there was a question about, you know, uh, Capel being Capel. You know, like, uh, you know, Capel trying to be a Southlake, I, I definitely don't want us to be a Southlake, I, you know, just going and visiting Southlake and looking through the lens of. The amenities they have, I, I, I don't think that that's for Capel, but what I do think is, is that. When I think about Old Town, my version of Old Town is like. A day in Old Town, I was, I was talking to, thought about this, I think about waking up on that Saturday, going to the farmer's market, hanging out. Uh, getting that lunch, uh, you know, maybe doing some shopping, uh, watching a football game. There's an event, like a concert or something at the art center that we're gonna hang out, and the kids are with us all day, you know, we're, we're hanging out. I can, you know, have a beer, hang out with friends, you know, en- enjoy, like, to me, that's Capel, when you talk about a family community for a lifetime. Like, it's spending time with your family, but. We have the abilities to be able to do that, without, you know, affectionately named bubble, if you will, you know, I, I don't wanna go to Southlake. You know, I'll, I'll go to Southlake to go pick up some AirPods, but I don't wanna go anywhere to go and have lunch, I wanna. I wanna stay here, I wanna support all these awesome local business owners, I'm a, I'm a business owner myself, I will support my kind, you know, the people that are. Roll up their sleeves every day, so that's kind of my vision, is that. We have that ability to spend that day, and then, I would also say on the, the fact that we are in, you know, that western part of town. If we've got more restaurants and stuff, you know, thinking about the, the workers that we have, we've got the, um, you know, we've got the warehouse workers, the distribution center. Uh, workers there, providing them more lunch options. You know, getting that out a little bit more, I want those, uh, those restaurants. And hopefully retail to, to thrive, because we've got the daytime crowd, and then we've got the evening crowd, which are some of the families during the weekdays as well, so. Trying to have balance is important, but we also need to listen to our business owners and see what they need to be successful during daytime. Thank you guys again for speaking, appreciate it.
Um, I have a question as far as the. Like, from the Old Town survey information, did that also include. Asking our current business owners, we've heard a few from today, but did we ask them, like. Maybe I'm asking Mindy, or. Kent or Tracy, but like, did we ask them? Um, what's working, what's not working? Um, and I say that because I actually didn't know, one of our establishments had tried alcohol and it didn't work, right? So, um, what's working, what's not working? What, um, like, just to get their input of what does successful look like? And how are they doing? Because the other part of this is making sure that we're. Maintaining our businesses there, we're support, supporting, or maybe that we're supporting the businesses who are currently there, whatever we add. Is an addition to, and it helps. That community, that part of the community as a whole, right? It's the synergy, correct? I will say, different from you, Kevin, I'm, I'm not looking necessarily to spend my whole day in Old Town. But I want to know that it's accessible and that there's a place where I can go grab coffee and. Sit down and do some work, and yet I, you know, I can go have dinner and then go to a show. Um, if it's the evening, or there's a place that I can pick up my mom from the senior center and take her for lunch. Right? Like, I want to make sure that throughout the day, there are different things that are available to us without. Neglecting the rest of our bubble per se, so I guess. That was a question and a comment, but have we surveyed our current business owners there on? How we're doing and making, and what, what keeps them there? And what's working and not working?
I'm looking at Mindy.
We did a big survey, but we talk to them on a regular basis, um. To get them to attend some meetings, um, that, I mean, we do the monthly meetings. Especially before events, to come to them, so we can do that in the next one, okay, and we're gonna have that conversation. Um, and see if we can get that response.
And, and that would be helpful as we then add to the comments that we currently have, and see where there might be some overlap, or where there might be some gaps, right? Because. You may, there may be things that we just don't know, we don't know what we don't know, right? So they're not staying late, is it workforce, is it? Foot traffic, is it a combination of, like, there may be things that are in our control, there are things that are not in our control, and would be good to know. Um, especially as we think about, do we expand the footprint, what does that look like?
Yeah, I will offer very quickly that Victor's used to be relatively empty from five to six thirty. On Friday and Saturday nights, until the art center started having shows. And now you see, they have a first wave of people that pretty well fill out the restaurant. You know, five, believe about six thirty, six forty-five, go to the arts. So there's certainly that, that's one example of the kind of need that, that we have. That, that would complement the art center. Uh, which is, as Mark correctly pointed out, has been a huge investment, so we. We should support that in all the other businesses down there.
Any other, any other things before we close out? Well, listen, uh, this has been an extremely good discussion. I think Kent and Tracy have a lot of what they were looking for. Maybe more than they were looking for. Which is good, we'll keep them busy, keep them in trouble.
This tool was cool.
Yeah, I really like that tool, we see them rock.
Well, therefore, you're being held further business before this, uh, council, we are adjourned at seven fifty-nine.